Board, we're recording.
Good morning. I would like to call to order the public meeting for Arapahoe County Board of County Commissioners on this Tuesday, October 18th, 2016. To my left is our county attorney, Ron Caron. To my far right is Jolene Sanchez, Assistant Clerk to the Board. Ms. Sanchez, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Bakkenfeld?
Here.
Commissioner Holland?
Here.
Commissioner Sharp?
Here.
Commissioner Jackson?
Here.
Commissioner Sharp, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Mr. Carl, are there any modifications to the agenda?
There are no modifications.
Thank you. May I please have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I shall move.
It has been moved by Commissioner Holland, seconded by Commissioner Jackson, to adopt the agenda as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have two sets of minutes to approve today. And the first, all of the commissioners were present at September 13th, and the second one, September 20th. Commissioner Sharp was absent, so we'll do them separately. May I please have a motion to approve the minutes from September 13th?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Jackson, seconded by Commissioner Sharp, to approve the minutes from September 13th, 2016. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And as I said, the second set of minutes are from September 20th. Commissioner Sharp was absent. May I please have a motion to approve those minutes?
I move approval.
It has been moved by Commissioner Holland, seconded by Commissioner Jackson, to approve September 20th, 2016 minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
One abstention. Uh, no. Minutes are approved. Now is the time for any citizen wishing to address the board on any issue that is not on the agenda this morning, please come forward. Good morning. Would you please state your name and address for the record? And just briefly to remind you to try to keep it to three minutes. Thank you. Yes, and the light. When you have 30 seconds left, the yellow light will come on. Thank you.
My name is Maureen Welch. I am a resident of Cherry Hills Village, and I'm a volunteer in an unemployed... The disability community is under quite a bit of scrutiny. I don't know if you all have been reading the newspapers, but, um, the state-run Pueblo Center is now under federal investigation and orders for non-compliance. Um, the commission... or, excuse me, the Center for Medicaid and Medicare Services are looking at charging back Colorado $7 million for services that were provided in violation of the agreement with the federal government. It's a time for transparency, for honesty, and for openness in the community, and my son has a developmental disability, and this is personal for me. There were over 58 articles, all the way from San Francisco to the East Coast, in regards to that issue. And I'm hoping today to come, and I am encouraged today, to report that I received an email from Commissioner Sharp in regards to a possible audit of the developmental pathways, 501(c)(3), that the county gives over $5 million a year to. I do have concerns that we make sure that the audit that is approved is worthwhile, is complete, thorough, and has the intention of full transparency. So on my list today, I asked you, in the spirit of transparency, since over a decade, this money has been going to developmental pathways unchecked, approximately $50 million, that there's a concern around the co-mingling of funds. Right now developmental pathways, number two, co-mingles the funds. It's a risky practice, the co-mingling both Douglas County and Arapahoe County funds together and submitting one annual report to both counties. It's concerning because it's a poor accounting process. It's also the same one that was an issue in Denver, when the Denver Auditor audited the Denver Community Center Board. The voters of each county independently voted the approval of their mill levy, and it should reflect, each report should reflect their own tax dollars, no co-mingling. I understand from Commissioner Sharp that the audit that you're currently considering would be a joint audit between Douglas County and Arapahoe County, and I have grave concerns that that is not a proper way to do this. We need to know how the separate funds are being used separately. The audit firm should also offer direction to developmental pathways for better accounting protocols than they currently use. Also, during this process of considering a CPA firm for this audit, I highly recommend that you keep this in the sunlight, that the board put out to the public the scope of work, the documents you're using to solicit these bids, also the method that you're using to select the bids from multiple firms, with assurances and full disclosures of any personal relationships or conflicts of interest. The final report should be made available to the public and presented to the public with allowance for public questions and clarifications. Also, there have been many advocacy groups that have requested this audit, and they request that you keep them up to date directly with their emails, and they're listed here on your paper. Denver Fox, Dr. Fox, who is with Padco, the Parents of Adults with Disabilities in Colorado, also Carol Meredith, the Arc of Arapahoe Douglas County, and Darla Stewart, the Arc of Aurora, they all have grave concerns about the accountability of these mill levy funds. And lastly, I greatly encourage this commission to reconsider how it appears to the public to have one of your commissioners sitting on as a voting member, the Board of Developmental Pathways. It's not appropriate. Most CCBs in the state do not do that, because they feel there's a conflict there when you all are approving the monies to give to a nonprofit, and then you're turning around and voting on their board. It's a conflict of interest, and I greatly appreciate the opportunity to speak today, and thank you, Commissioner Sharp, for your email. I'm hoping that this can be something that's discussed out in the sunlight and isn't a secret decision made behind doors with the commissioners, since this is a great deal of taxpayer money. Thank you so much for your time, and if anyone has questions, I'm right here.
Thank you, Ms. Welch. We will take that under consideration, so thank you very much.
And is there a process for this that is in rules or regulations, or how you consider these types of audits?
Uh, we are consulting with our finance director on that, so we will let you know, and it'll be public when we make that decision.
Okay, so who might I expect to hear back from? I guess I'm just wondering for follow-up.
Probably Commissioner Sharp.
Commissioner Sharp, okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? The next item is to approve the consent agenda. May I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Bakkenfeld, seconded by Commissioner Sharp, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have one general business item today which is not a public hearing. It is case WVR-16-021, Arapahoe Lakes Fee Waiver. Our attorney on this is Robert Hill. Mr. Hill, would you please set the foundation?
This fee waiver does not require any public notice. It's the board's jurisdiction to decide this issue.
Well, thank you for that. Mr. Skinner, you are presenter today. Please go ahead.
Hello, Skinner, for the Planning Division. Good morning, commissioners. Um, this is a fee waiver. We have a very, very vocalized government, quasi-governmental body in the Arapahoe Lakes Park District. They are looking at going through a subdivision exemption process. Colin Milkie is representing the HOA Parks District. He's going to speak to you about that briefly. I'm just going to talk about the staff involvement with the fee waiver. As you know, the fees are duly established through proper processes, and staff has been guided or directed to and fully supports the board's input that we're not supposed to be freely returning fees unless there's good justification. In this case, good, proper justification would be, are we going to do less work on this than we would on an other typical subdivision exemption? It doesn't look like it. It's, uh, not a particularly difficult situation, but I think it's going to be fairly cut and dried, and staff can't say we're going to be able to hand a lot of time back on this. The amount of fees that they're asking to have waived, total $3,500, staff doesn't support the waiver, but we do acknowledge that everyone who's going to be paying fees has the right to come to the board and speak to you about it. So with that in mind, I'm going to step aside and have Colin Milkie come up and talk to you about what's behind their request.
Mr. Jackson?
Yeah, so, um, I was just a little confused about this. I did try to read it, but, um, at any rate, so is this just a transfer of ownership, or does this engineering requires many hours of your department's time?
Um, it is, a subdivision exemption process is essentially, it's going to result in a plat document.
So you are going to have to, um, put in some time in drawings and review, et cetera?
It's mostly going to be our mapping division, which, you know, the county surveying staff will be reviewing the private side surveyor that creates this document. But they will be doing the same level of checking it against title work and checking it against history as they would, say, with a minor subdivision or a final plat.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Sharp?
Thank you. I was trying to find it on here, because I'm... pardon me, um, there was a breakdown of the planning review, so $500 was the initial... I understand that the engineering is $2,000, but what's the $1,500, the breakdown between the $1,500? Wasn't there like $500, and then there's another thousand? It might, I was trying to find it in here, but I sworn I read it in here, but...
I believe with the subdivision exemption planning, um, the planning division, which also covers the services of the mapping review staff, it's a flat $1,500.
Okay. All right.
The engineering, the, uh, engineering service division typically, when we have a plat, which, as I say, a subdivision exemption resembles, um, it can get into looking at utilities and traffic studies. Most of these activities are when you're creating more lots, potentially to add more businesses or residences. In this case, we have, everything's already on the ground. There's not going to be any actual construction occurring. It's essentially relocating and crafting new lots, so that ownership can be transferred very specifically. But the neighborhood, if you walked through the neighborhood the day before it happened, and then the day after it happened, nothing's going to change.
Yeah, and that's why I'm, I'm just trying to understand the fees a little bit here, is that this neighborhood's been here for a really long time.
It has.
And, um, so I, I'm not seeing that there's a lot of change here, you know? Should be, it, it appears to me that it is more cut and dry. There's really not anything new here. I understand that things have to be verified, but I'm trying to figure out exactly where the, where the cost on our, from our standpoint, the county's standpoint, is...
It's largely a matter of checking it against historical records and then making sure that the new lot lines that are crafted are accurate and blend well with all the existing lot lines that will surround it. But you're absolutely correct, Commissioner Sharp. It's not like a development plan where we're trying to figure out how are we going to fit more houses, more cars, more streets.
So is the primary work on the engineering side or the planning side? I mean, what, in this particular case?
The staff that will be, it'll be mapping, so under the planning side of the house.
Okay. So I would just like to ask, so you're telling me that there's no reduction in time or effort to get this done, as compared to another applicant?
That doesn't look like it, no ma'am. It, it appears that we're going to have the same amount of time in checking documents, moving documents around, writing materials, documenting our process, as we would if this were any other final plat or subdivision exemption.
Okay. All right.
Having said that, though, I would like the Arapahoe Lakes folks to have their, their say, so...
Absolutely. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Just state your name and address for the records, please.
Colin Milkie. I'm a legal representative for Arapahoe Lake Public Park District. Address is 7400 East Orchard Avenue, Suite 3300, Greenwood Village, Colorado 80111.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time today, commissioners. Arapahoe Lake Public Park District is part of a community that was developed in the early 80s. Uh, what we're requesting today is a waiver of fees, about $3,500 to $4,000 in fees that would be part of the subdivision exemption process. Uh, we're seeking the subdivision exemption, because back in the early 80s, this property that consists of a pool and tennis courts was supposed to be conveyed by the developer to the Public Park District, which is a local governmental entity for operation and maintenance purposes. That didn't happen. Um, uh, within the last 10 years or so, uh, the community's found out that, uh, the Public Park District doesn't actually own the property underneath where this pool and the tennis court sit. And so the HOA and also the District have worked together to try to solve that problem. They've worked with the developer to get the developer to convey the property over appropriately. Unfortunately, it was conveyed over to the HOA. And these, the property sits on two separate lots, um, which are much larger lots, most of which are maintained by the HOA, including a, um, a community lake within the area, a lot of landscaping within the area. But the pool and the tennis courts themselves are maintained and operated by the District. And so what we want to do is convey from the HOA to the District just that portion of property that the District has been operating and maintaining for the past 30 or so years. To do that, because this property is located on two separate lots right now, we need to go through the county's subdivision exemption process. And what that's going to do is that's going to create a third lot, which is just the pool and the tennis court property, and then the HOA will be able to convey that lot over to the District for operations and maintenance. Again, the District has been operating and maintaining this property for the last 30 or so years. It's a local government entity, so, uh, one of the big reasons we're requesting a fee waiver is because the money to pay these fees are coming out of the homeowner's property taxes. That's how the system's operated and maintained. So it's not, it's not what your traditional request would be, where a developer's coming in and maybe requesting these fees during the development process. This has been a homeowner community and homeowner on board for decades now, and the homeowners are on a relatively tight budget. It's a, it's a small community of about 228 property owners, and they're looking to clean up an issue that's been, um, out there since the early 80s, and they want to do what's right, and they want to get it done in a fiscally responsible manner for their constituents. In addition, uh, the property went through a process with the county of about six or seven years ago, when they renovated their pool and tennis court facilities. So we've had interactions with the county previously, where we've had site plan review, we've had engineering review. So it shouldn't be too, um, foreign of a project for the county staff to review. And then also, um, one of the other reasons that we're looking for this, uh, process to be completed is that, as a Public Park District, uh, we're a member of the Colorado Special District Association, the insurance pool for the Special District Association. There's also public bond financing that has gone into the, um, construction of these facilities and the renovation of these facilities. So by having the property owned by the local government that's actually operating and maintaining this, it gives us a little bit more security from a public policy and, um, perspective, that, um, our bonds are financing property that's actually owned by the entity, and our insurance is actually covering property owned by the public entity, as opposed to being owned by, uh, an HOA and just operated and maintained by the local government. So, um, we really appreciate your time and your consideration. Um, I can tell you that the fee waiver will be appreciated by the community, and, um, it's a very good board of directors that we have, and they are a very fiscally responsible, uh, board, and they've done a great job of operating and maintaining these facilities for the public for many, many years now. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Yes, Mr. Sharp?
Um, yes, Mr. Milkie, what documents did you all submit, um, in order to request this subdivision exemption?
We've been working with the county staff, um, for a while now, um, and one of the documents that you may have seen already is our letter of intent. I also have copies, if you'd like me to pass those around.
Got that.
Um, another thing that we have drafted is we do have a, uh, map of the proposed lot, and then I've also printed off a couple of the county maps that show the approximate area where that would be. If you'd like to see those as well, I could hand them to the clerk to the board.
I'm just trying to see if any of the documents that you submitted might, um, relieve the county of some additional work that they might have to do that you've already done and submitted to us.
It, it is our engineers coming up with the mapping. Um, we've worked with the title company to do all the title reporting. Um, I, we understand that there's going to be a, a level of review by the county, but I do believe that, um, we can facilitate most of their questions and answer them and create most of the documents on our end. Really what this is, is because it's a subdivision exemption and because the HOA can't convey or carve out its own parcel of property to convey to the District, we need to have the Board of County Commissioners of the county sign off on the creation of this third parcel. So really kind of an administrative matter from our perspective, but we do understand there is some review.
Thank you. I'm going to ask a question first. Uh, will this transfer happen even without the fee waiver?
Uh, it, it's hard to gauge. We tabled it probably about five years ago, because, um, we were uncertain whether or not a fee waiver would occur, and, um, and it's, we've re-initiated it, because we believe it's an important thing to fix. But $4,000, it, it adds up to about 2.5% of the District's tax revenue budget for the year. So it's, the fees are a sizable chunk of this community's resources for the year. So I can't, I can't say that it would not be tabled again and then just come up five years down the road.
Mr. Holland?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Milkie, um, can you explain why, from a historical perspective, why this land was not conveyed to the District? And, you know, it seems like that, that should have, should have happened. What's your information and background and the historical aspect of it?
I agree with you. It, it should have been done at the time the development was created, and I've looked through our files, tried to determine that. Um, I, I don't have access to the developer's files, so I'm not sure what was done on their end and why it wasn't done at the, at that time. Um, I do know that, um, the pool and the tennis courts were placed on two separate outlots that were eventually dedicated to the HOA. So there's some sort of a public nature to that conveyance, except for the HOA is a private entity, and, uh, the Park District is the one that's been operating and maintaining these facilities since, since inception. So, uh, unfortunately, I don't have the historical data that, uh, that can help us determine why it wasn't done properly in the beginning. Bill, our board president, or Andrew Shear, our board president's here. Can you be able to speak to the historical facts?
I'm glad. Sorry not to belabor this any longer. My name's Andrew Shear. I'm a resident of six, uh, Arapahoe County at 6356 South Geneva Circle, Englewood 80111. Um, I'm also the president of the Park District, um, which is a volunteer organization that I put my hand up for eight years ago when we renovated the pool, and I'm still the president eight years later. Um, my understanding of this is that the District was created because the original developer hired someone to construct the pool, and that contractor absconded with about $70,000 of funds and never completed the pool. And the residents got together and approached the county commissioner at the time and said, "We'd like some governmental control over what's going on here, because we have a hole in our neighborhood and no pool." And, uh, that was work with the county commissioners and some residents who created this district to finish the pool and then operate and maintain it and the tennis courts since that time, 30 some years. Um, so at that time, I wasn't there, of course, but I haven't really seen any paperwork why these outlots were not, uh, deeded over. The original developer, Alpert Company, created, as Colin said, we have a two-acre lake, we have extensive green belts, and this large outlot that includes the pool and tennis courts, playground, volleyball area in the grass and so forth. And even that lot and the lake and the other outlots were not properly conveyed by the developer to the HOA back at that time. And so the HOA had to clean up that transfer and finally got the developer, just in the last few years, to convey all of those outlots back over to our HOA, who's probably had a right of my possession. I don't know all the legal details of that, but they'd been, you know, maintaining it, maintaining the lake, maintaining the green belts, replanting trees and all that for 30 some years. They just found this paperwork problem, and that lot got moved at that time, where the pool and tennis courts are located, to the HOA. They should have done, at least at that time, if not originally, done this tennis court and pool to the District that had been created. So there was kind of a blanket, a very large area within the community that was done all at once, and that may be why it wasn't done in this last recent period to the District. That gives you some answers to your question. And I might just add that the budget issue is why we have tabled this. We went through the renovation. That was something I joined the board to help manage, and we worked with county staff, and it was a great process. We renovated the pool, we built new restroom buildings, pump buildings, and new equipment and all of that, and as part of that, we had to go through the site plan process and building permitting process, and we, you know, we had drainage studies, we had all of engineering review of what are the, and the various utility companies, of what utilities surround the site. So we weren't digging them up and all that kind of process. So that was a process we went through, paid all those fees, and did that renovation. And, um, we, as you guys know very well, we haven't been able to adjust our levies upward through a vote of the community, so we've been kind of struggling along trying to maintain this facility under our current budget, and that's why we've asked for this exemption.
Commissioner Bakken?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. It's probably an educational answer for me, but my understanding how it's been described is that you have the lake, the tennis court, and the, and the, um, swimming pool, and that you want to convey it to the Rec District. The reason you can't is because those are now under the control of the HOA. Why not also transfer the lake and the two parcels over to the, um, Rec District?
You asked a fantastic question. I've posed that at our HOA board, uh, several times, but they think of that as a huge, extensive exercise relative to all the issues that go with the lake, and, um, there's semswa involvement of that lake, of, uh, water rights issues for replenishing evaporation. There's a whole bunch of complex issues that surround the lake and the green belts. And this issue, we've tried to just isolate relative to the Metro, the Public Park District here. They, they view that exercise of getting all of those HOA-owned common areas into a District as a very daunting task that has a lot more complexity than this single issue. So this issue's been carved out, but that was my reaction when I heard about all this and I joined this board eight years ago, of common areas like that being in a District with governmental immunity for insurance costs and all those kinds of things would make a lot more sense to me, too. But that isn't my job, is running the District, of getting that HOA to do it. I have suggested that.
Commissioner Jackson?
Yes, so, um, you have put this off for a number of years, um, partly because of the budget. On the other hand, you've done other kinds of improvements and so on, correct? So what would happen if you put it off for another five years? I mean, what, what is, what is pushing this? Why is it that you're wanting to do this now?
Yeah. Just from a legal perspective, I'm sure there's some community perspectives as well, but, um, as I did say, there's, there's existing bond financing right now. If that were ever to be refinanced, that's, that's one issue that could possibly come up, is do you own the property under which, um, you're looking to refinance your bonds for? At this point, no. Whether or not that actually poses a problem for bond counsel and their ability to give us an opinion, it yet to be determined, but it's something that if we went through the financing process and found that out at the end, that's a lot of cost that would be incurred for nothing. And then also, the insurance with, uh, or the issue with insurance is, um, right now... right now they have a lease which, for the time being, has worked to allow us to use the governmental insurance, which is less and, less cost and more robust in its protections than private insurance, but that's also not a guarantee for the foreseeable future. Owning the property under which you have your assets is by far the best way to insure your property.
Commissioner Sharp?
This is probably an education question for me, but, excuse me. Could the developer, should the developer, I think I understood that the developer could have deeded this property in different, set it up differently when deeded over. So is there a way for the developer to fix this at no cost? Or, you know, because I, I know Alpert's come to us regularly on other developments. And so just a legal question.
Yeah, the, the community has worked with the developer. That is, that is how the developer ended up conveying the properties to the HOA. From a legal standpoint, boxes have been checked. There are two outlots that exist, they're, they're on the plat. This is an off the cuff legal answer, which we always hate to give, but I, I don't see anything that was done wrong from a legal standpoint. It's just from a practical standpoint, that, it doesn't make sense for the district to be operating and maintaining its property, the property that the HOA owns.
And, and I think my question is really, is this the only way to resolve this issue? Or is going back to the developer a way to remedy this as well? And maybe this is the only option?
Correct, I don't see going back to the developer as a viable option.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Skinner, do you have any additional comments? Okay, further discussion?
Well, I would like to, see, I think there are some costs associated with doing this, but, you know, it has been, and I think there's some really good reasons for going ahead and, and having this cleaned up. If I were a homeowner in the neighborhood, I would, I would like to do that. So my proposal would be to, to only charge a portion of the fees and maybe the planning review fees, which is the, which are the $1,500. And hopefully get documentation from the HOA on some of the other things that, you know, there are probably a lot of, as you described, or all of the documents there that can maybe help make our process more limited in scope. So that would be unless there's significant objection, I will make a motion along those lines. In the case of WVR sixteen dash oh two one Arapahoe Lakes Park District, request for a waiver of fees associated with subdivision exemption. We have read the board summary, excuse me, and received testimony at the regularly scheduled public meeting on the board on October 18th, 2016. We approve a partial fee waiver of fif, well, let's see, the $1,500 would be the total cost. Wait, well, it's the way it's worded. It's worded as a $3,500 fee. So if I say it's a waiver of the fee, I'm not sure if that's a waiver of the $2,000 or a waiver of the amount I want to propose.
Understand, you would be leaving $2,000 and proposing an amended fee of 1,500.
Okay, so approve a partial fee waiver of $2,000 with a total fee of 1,500. That's my motion.
Do we have a second? I'll second it. Further discussion? Commissioner Jackson?
Yeah, I am, I was thinking, this is a difficult one, I just will say. And I agree, we have costs in the county and our budget is tight as we all know. And so somebody has to pay for our staff's time. If it isn't this applicant, it would be spread across other, other constituents, other taxpayers. So I'm a little uneasy with this kind of waiver. And another reason is that I don't really hear a hardship, anything that would really be detrimental to either the, the property value or the citizens. So I'm a little uncomfortable with waiving $2,000. I might be willing to negotiate and give them a, a some relief. But again, if this is the cost to the county, then that, that, that payment for staff time has to come from somewhere. So I'm not really comfortable with this as it stands.
Further discussion? Well, we have a motion on the table to waive $2,000 of the fee. Let's do a voice vote. Commissioner Bakkenfeld?
Yes.
Commissioner Holm?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp? Commissioner Jackson?
No.
Commissioner Doty? Yes. So the motion passes four to one. Thank you. Okay, now is the time for any commissioner wishing to address the audience here. With any comment, please do so. Seeing none, the meeting is adjourned.